And we are missing our clerk, who is on her way from the airport from a conference. So hopefully she'll get here eventually. Good to see everybody this evening. Got a full house in the mayor's world. You never know if that's good or bad, but hopefully it's good. Good to have you all with us, though, and we'll go ahead and call this public work session to order, and we will start this evening with the roll call.
President.
Thank you for doing that. I appreciate it. And we'll need approval of an agenda this evening.
Motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, we're good. All right, under announcements and presentations this evening, who's taking that? Do we have a, do we have some announcements or presentations this evening? No? No, we're good. All right. Easy peasy. We'll move on down to public hearings. First up, we have PZ 2024 1245, which is 4118 West Johnson Circle. John, you'll start that.
Mayor, members of council, my name is John Maximek. I'm Director of Planning and Development, and we have a number of public hearings and the reports to go with them for various cases tonight, all very different. And although we have a number of, a long list of cases for tonight, I will do my best to bring out the details of those cases, since it is a public hearing for the benefit of the public and for council. We'll be voting on these on Tuesday. The first up is 4118 West Johnson Circle. The applicant is Woodruff Design LLC, care of Kathleen Woodruff. The owners wish to construct a single-family house on the property. You can see the site location on the next slide is at the cul-de-sac of West Johnson Circle on the east end. Staff recommendation is denial for both variances being requested, and we'll get into that in a minute. The proposed site is shown on the slide after the aerial shot inside the, inside the, the red rectangle. The primary characteristics of this site, right now it's a wooded site with prominent stream running through it and the 25-foot state buffers, the 50-foot state buffers in the center, and to the left in yellow is the 75-foot buffer. And you could see where the proposed building site is relative to those stream buffers. This is a central point of the ca, of this case. Here on the next slide, you have the proposed elevations for this single-family house from the various locations. The proposed structure is 33 feet tall. Structure be constructed of brick, hardy board, and battened siding, and standing seam metal roof. The residence would include a two-car garage, kitchen, et cetera. The next slide shows an outline of the proposed floor plans, and this, and this continues. Further, you'll see subject property, and you could see that it is wooded, and you could see that it is on the cul-de-sac. Still more pictures of the subject property. Now into the staff recommendation. Based on the analysis of the application using the standards and criteria, in chapter 280 and 300 of the UDO, staff recommends denial of the following variance request. A variance is when one varies from the Unified Development Ordinance in some way, and there's criteria that goes along with that. We try to address that. We encourage the applicants to address that. The first is a variance from section 230-3 to reduce the front yard setback from 40 feet to 20 feet. And the second is a variance from section 310-19 to construct a single-family home in the 50-foot undisturbed buffer and 70-foot no impervious surface area streams buffer. So the first has to do with where the structure is located off of the street. And so we, 40 feet is required. Applicants asking to go down to 20. And so, and the second one is to construct a single family house within the, the two buffers, the 50-foot and the 75-foot buffer. And we recall from the, the proposed building in the red structure, in the red rectangle, that it does indeed cross over into those two buffers. Staff recommends denial because the, because the, the criteria is not met for these unified, for the, for the variances. The front, in the front yard setback, the house would be brought out so far, in part to accommodate construction outside of more buffer area, but it would change the context of the existing structures in that cul-de-sac, in that neighborhood, bringing the structure and the mass of the structure at 33 feet way out front, and it's not in keeping with the existing neighborhood. And the second part is that the, there's too much impact on the buffer for construction within the 15 and 75-foot buffer. For these reasons, staff's recommending denial. Should the council approve the variance requests and see otherwise, staff recommends strongly that the proposed structure shall not extend into the 20-foot, into the 50-foot undisturbed buffer at all, and that the front yard setback shall not be reduced more than 32 feet. And lastly, the applicant shall install a water infiltration device to capture a minimum of 1.5 times the impervious area of the proposed structure. So they, the, this last, well, I guess the, the first and the third proposed recommendations, should you grant approval, have to do with mitigating the impact in these buffer areas. But again, staff recommends denial on these two, and this is just a context information.
Okay, normally I would read the rules of order for public hearings, but I do not have those this evening, and so I'm going to wing this. But we would, what we, how we do this is we allow proponents and opponents each 10 minutes time to come up to the microphone. It is a monologue, not a dialogue. If there are questions, council may ask those later on in the, in the agenda, but not right at this moment. But, and council may extend those 10 minutes, provided they're expanded equally for both proponents and opponents. So we would ask anyone wishing to come, speak to come to the microphone and give the city clerk or the city staff your name and address, tell us how you're related to the project, and, and then again, limit your remarks to 10 minutes or less. So anyone wishing to speak on this particular project, if you want to come to the microphone, give us your, yeah.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Kathleen Woodruff. I'm working, I'm the engineer on the project and did this middle on behalf of this client for the application. So he is actually requesting, oh wow, sorry, didn't mean to be so loud. He is actually requesting to, he's already purchased the lot, so he does own the lot, and he wants to build a single-family residential structure here. We actually don't have a problem with not getting a front setback variance. We actually didn't want that. The, there was some discussion with the city before the application. So we're fine with not having a front setback variance. I just want to address that because we could push this structure back to be in line with what the other structures are there, but it does encroach into the 50-foot buffer more. He's looking at a kind of a farmhouse-style home. It's a tough site to construct on, so there's just not much area to work with at all. The biggest problem and the reason for the request of the variance is this lot was legally created more than 30 years ago, prior to any of these buffers existing. And so you actually would have been able to have space to build on them at that time. But with the adoption on the changes that Shambly has had, the adoption of the 50-foot undisturbed buffer and the 75-foot non-impervious buffer, you essentially create a situation where this lot is no longer developable because of the zoning ordinance that has been adopted. So it's more of a legal standpoint than him wanting to, you know, bring the house up too forward or anything like that. We're fine with meeting it, but we would have a little bit more encroachment. We have provided proposals for the structure itself so that you could see the elevations he has, and we can mitigate the one-and-a-half times the impervious surface that's through stormwater management during the engineering process and the LDP process. We would mitigate that based on the Georgia Stormwater Manual and the requirements of Shambly. And I've actually taken a look at that, although it's a little premature now, but we can do that on-site and not have any negative impact to that stream per the codes required currently. But I would like to let, there's a gentleman here that would like to speak.
In favor?
Yes, yes, sir. Oh, I don't know that he's in favor. I'll let him speak.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this project, come on up. Okay, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, come up. Give us your name and address, please.
Hey, good afternoon. I'm Matt Cook. I live at 4076 East Johnson Circle, which shares a lot line across the stream from this piece of property. So I lived in this neighborhood for 20 some-odd years. I've actually owned five different homes in the neighborhood and put numerous additions on. The neighborhood is typically one-story on a crawl space or one-story on a basement house. They're bungalow houses, and they've been that way for a long time. The house, the neighborhood was developed in 1950, and when they did that, they divided it up to put as many houses as they could in the neighborhood, and they put approximately 80 houses. They didn't put a house on this piece of property. They shoehorned it, and you ask, why didn't they put a piece of, of house on this piece of property? And that is because if you look at the setbacks and the stream and the elevation, there's about 1,200 square foot of land that's able to be built without a problem. It's not a buildable lot. Now, building styles and construction have changed since then, so it is physically possible to build a house there now. But what that elevation they showed you doesn't show. They say it's 30 some feet. It is 40 feet from the base to the top of the roof. But because of the elevation, there's going to be a stem wall where they have to build up to maintain that bottom grade. So actually, from grade to where the top of the eve is could be close to 50 foot, which is taller than an apartment building, a four-story apartment building. Not only that, because of the grade and the stream, in order to support that foundation, they're going to have to dig down to support it. So even though they're not going to take out the tree where you're sitting, where they're building, they're going to destroy the roots of that tree. And eventually, that tree's going to come down. And now that wiled area or that undisturbed area, the trees are going to be gone. I'm not opposed to, to development. My neighbor just put a 4,000-square-foot addition on her house, and what I see is a one-story house with a basement, and it's fitting in the neighborhood. What they're asking to do doesn't fit in this neighborhood, and it's a really nice neighborhood to live in. It's a neighborhood families and, and it's, it's nice. I really don't want to see it change. And I don't want to see all the trees go.
Was there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? No one else in opposition? All right, did you want to do a rebuttal or have more, add more to it?
We actually, you won't see a stem wall, so there, it'll be about 30 feet. You can see that on the elevations, and there are ways that we can vegetate that. This lot is actually pretty heavily wooded, so we did a tree survey when we were looking at what we were, you know, working with. And we've got more than 1,300 units available on this, or that will be left on-site, even with the 13 trees we'll remove in the area of construction. So it's extremely well-planted, and we won't be, I know the winter months are different, but when spring and summer come in, I don't think your view will be as negatively impacted as you would think. But it again is a legal lot and zoned for development. The buffers that were adopted many, many years later create a situation that make it where we can't work without a variance. But I'm happy to answer any other questions if you'd like me to.
This item does come back up later on in the agenda. Council may or may not have questions at that time. Next item up this evening is PZ 2024 1258, which is 3715 Longview Drive. John?
In this case, 3715 Longview Drive, variances and waivers for renovation of a place of Staff recommendation is approval with conditions, and we will get into that. The owners, Brookhaven Kalal Synagogue, care of Dillard Sellers, 3715 Longview Drive. This is a corridor commercial zoning. There are four variances total and two waivers. The variances require the public hearing, the waivers do not. Both require city council approval. In sum, this is a renovation of an existing commercial building. The location you can see on the aerial is at the large corner of Admiral Drive and Longview Drive. This is one large lot. Again, like the other case prior, it is characterized by a stream buffer that runs through the site and then under the intersection via culvert. You can see a number of details on this slide here, including those buffers and the building. You can also see some of the proposed improvements through this. The next slide shows proposed elevations by way of a architectural graphic showing the proposed improvements to the building. And then the following slides give you a sense of how the site looks today, including that, the stream buffer and the, the corner that will be impacted. And then finally, a trench flow that directs stormwater. Based on the analysis of the application using the standards and criteria found in chapters 280 and 300 of the UDO, staff recommends approval with conditions of the following variance requests for this case. A waiver from section 230-26 to reduce a portion of the landscape strip along Admiral Drive from five feet to zero feet to accommodate on-street parking. A variance from section 250-2 to reduce the required number of off-street parking spaces from 62 spaces to 10 spaces. A variance from section 250-3 to increase the maximum number of shared parking spaces from 25% or 16 spaces to 56% or 35 spaces. A variance from section 250-9 to increase the maximum number of on-street parking spaces from 25% or 16 spaces to 27% or 17 spaces. And then a variance from section 310-19 to encroach into the 50-foot wide, undisturbed and 75-foot wide, no impervious surface stream buffer setbacks. And then a waiver from section 350-2 to allow two existing curb cuts to remain on a single street frontage. Should staff approve the variance request, staff recommends the following conditions of approval. The development shall be constructed in substantial conformity with the site plan and elevations received by the Planning and Development Department dated and received March 26, 2024, with revisions required by conditions of approval as revised, reviewed and approved by the, the department director. The driveway entrances along Longview Drive shall be reduced in width to 20 feet wide. Allow them to remain, but reduce them to 20 feet. Applicants shall replace the existing safety railing at the intersection of Longview Drive and Admiral Drive, and the railing shall be decorative and 50% transparent. And the applicant shall explore the possibility of a mid-block pedestrian crossing from the shared, proposed shared parking lot to the subject site. The final location and design of the crosswalk shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer in our department. That is all for the report.
Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this project? If you'll come on up and give us your name and address and how you're related to the project.
I submitted some slides. Are those available? I sent them last week. Oh, great, okay. Thank you. Good evening. Julie Sellers with Dillard Sellers, 1776 Peachtree Street, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. And joining me is Jay Silverman with Dwell Design Studios. We have Rabbi Shapiro, who will lead the congregation and lives in the Huntley Hills neighborhood. We also have a group of Huntley Hills residents. I'll ask them just to raise their hand to indicate these are Shambly residents who are here tonight in support of this application. It's always a privilege to come when you actually have neighbors that are supporting something, so thank you all for being here. And we do have also with us Rabbi Silverman, who is also joining us. So can I control the? So just to orient everyone, this is the corner of Longview and Admiral Drive, so as you are at Shambly Plaza, going down towards the Huntley Hills neighborhood, the property is a 1950s commercial building located on the right-hand side of the street. It is a vacant, single-story building with a basement that was previously an auto repair shop. The property has significant site constraints. As you can see, and I recognize it's hard to see, but basically, this property has a stream that runs, bisects the property. You really could not do a lot, and I want to be very clear, we are not proposing to add any impervious. We're not increasing the building footprint. This is simply an adaptive reuse of the existing building for the religious services. So we are not, we are just reconfiguring the interior and doing some cosmetic upgrades to make it more fitting in the neighborhood. The uses would be for religious and related educational uses, Saturday morning services, as well as Monday and Thursday evening classes with expected attendance for about 18 to 35 for those evening classes. Once a month, there's an event for about 35 to 50 people, and this location was selected and this property was purchased to provide services to residents in and around the Huntley Hills neighborhood. However, there's not sufficient parking on the site, and so that is why we are here. It's part of the reason why we're here. The main driver of why we are here is for the parking variance. And then in addition to that, given the city's code requirements, when you are doing an adaptive reuse, it triggers some things, and we do need some relief to be able to add the sidewalks and some on-street parking. So dealing with the parking, we are proposing on the site plan 10 spaces on-site. We have 17 on-street parking spaces that we will be creating, as well as the addition of sidewalks. And then we do have agreements with nearby commercial property owners for 35 shared parking spaces. So with all of that combined, we do meet the parking requirements. However, it's just not in the manner in which the code would, would require us to do so. On this slide, you can see where I have circled in purple, that is the location for the newly created on-street parking spaces. This slide also shows that there is no, well, this shows, this is looking, the property is on the left hand of this slide, so as you can see, in front of the property, there is no existing sidewalk, and so we would be installing the landscaping as well as a sidewalk, and really improving the pedestrian experience along this corridor. The variances and waivers are related to some of the dimensional requirements to provide the improvements as shown on the site plan. This is the sample elevation. You can see it's, you know, new painting, a new gable roof on part of it, just to modernize the exterior slightly, but again, no change to the footprint of the property. Did want to go ahead and just briefly walk through the requests that we have. There are the variances and the waivers. We would ask for your approval. We do meet the code's criteria. In the handout that I provided to you, the staff has made four recommendations, and we would ask for approval without condition number four. And what I handed you is a street view to show Longview. Longview, based on the grade of the road, based on the width of the road, we are very concerned about having a mid-block pedestrian crossing. It does not sound like something that our design team is supportive of because of safety concerns. We absolutely don't want to create an unsafe condition. The crosswalk at Admiral and Longview is currently existing, and the distance is not such that people should not be able to actually walk to that intersection to be able to cross safely. So those were just some photos to show you those conditions we would ask to not. I did notice it sounded like tonight, in John's presentation, it said to explore, which sounded like maybe not a mandatory condition, so we can certainly talk between now and Tuesday, but we have significant safety concerns as it relates to that mid-block. The other request was condition number two. That was to change the existing curb cuts and reduce those down to 20 feet. Our request would be to approve, as we've indicated in the site plan, which is just maintaining the existing curb cut. We are going to be doing significant improvements that we believe will benefit the neighborhood and the public with the sidewalks and everything, and would ask for the existing curb cuts to remain in place. If I have a few minutes, I know that we have one or two residents from the community that would like to speak and support, and I'd like to ask them to come up at this time.
My name is Michael Fingerman. I live at 4074 Estill Drive, which is a, and I'm here with my wife Leah. And it's about a 10-minute beautiful neighborly, neighborly walk from our home to where the proposed synagogue would be, and I just wanted to share my appreciation for your consideration and let you know that it would be very meaningful to my family to have a synagogue in our neighborhood. So thank you.
Hi, my name is, sorry, Xena Jackson. I'm at 4119 Admiral Drive with my mom, Beth Gelb. I've actually grown up in the neighborhood since I was six years old. I've never had a synagogue in walking distance, and over the past couple months, I've gotten to know Rabbi Shapiro, his family, and his wife, his, and children, and other members of the Kalal, and they're great people. And honestly, it really makes me feel like I do have a more inclusive community here in Shambly. I also think that the proposed plans are a great way to revitalize the building, since it is an ISO currently and not being used. So I just hope that you guys can approve this project, but thank you for your time.
I'll reserve any remaining time for rebuttal.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition of this project? Sir?
I'm with Smoke Designs Architects and Planners. I own the building directly across the street from the subject property. I'm at 3700 Longview Drive. I know that the city planners has suggested that this be approved, but I'm going to implore you guys to deny it. The synagogue has asked for parking on my property, and I've denied that. There is just no place in the neighborhood, at least on my property, to park. So although it may be said that parking has been contracted for, it is not. Also remind everyone that this is the primary entrance into Huntley Hills. If you guys have been there around quitting time or in the morning, you can imagine the kind of traffic we have. So on-street parking is creating a safety hazard for the city of Shambly. So I would ask you guys to deny this request, or at least consider amending many of the requirements. My thanks.
Yes, sir. Anyone else here wishing to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none. Julie, did you want to?
Just briefly in rebuttal, I'll be happy to talk to Mr. Smoke. I don't believe that his property is the property that we have. Clearly, it's not the property that we have agreements to park on, so there certainly would not be trespassing or parking.
would not be trespassing or parking on his private property. And we've worked really hard with the city and with the staff. We know the condition on Longview, and that has become a cut-through road. We do believe that doing the streetscaping and adding the parallel parking will also help with some traffic calming measures along that road. And we would ask for your approval of the application. Again, the, you know, it's a challenged property, and we think that this is a great use to provide a service to community members, most of whom will be living in the area and able to walk, and for, you know, certainly certain services would be walking anyway and would not be driving. So, thank you for your consideration, happy to answer any questions during the meeting.
Point of procedure, did you wish to say anything else, sir? Or anybody else wish to speak in opposition? Okay, all right, very good. All right, next up on the agenda is PZ 2024 1259, which is 1700 Century Center Boulevard.
Hey, Mayor, members of council. As you said, 1700 Century Circle Northeast. This is a request for variance and waivers for the renovation of a veterinary clinic, renovation of a building for a veterinary clinic with no outdoor boarding of animals. Staff recommends approval with conditions for various requests, and we'll get into that. First, a little bit about this application. The applicant is MedVet, care of William Woods and Galloway, Galloway Law Group, who's here tonight. The owner is Highwoods Realty LP, care of Heather Lamb. And it's 2.45 acres, zone mixed-use business center. And there are seven variances and six waivers in question this month. Again, it's a renovation of an existing office building into a veterinary animal hospital. More about the proposed site, if you're not familiar, this is, let me get to it in a second. You'll see, you'll see the intersection of the building located on the intersection. The applicant proposes to completely renovate the interior of this office building for the veterinary hospital. The applicant proposes to construct an outdoor pet relief area with no outdoor dog boarding or runs. It's just a relief area. The interior renovations do trigger the 70% redevelopment threshold, which requires full compliance with the UDO. And as you know, in the UDO, there's various levels of alterations that trigger various levels of redevelopment requirements. This requires the full UDO set of requirements, and that has a lot to do with the variances that are being requested. Here are some pictures to characterize the existing site. If you're familiar with the Century City area, this is, this is a familiar site. And it's about four sets of pictures here. So on to the recommendations. Based on the analysis of the application, using the standards and criteria found in Sections 280 and 300 of the UDO, staff recommends approval with conditions. Variance from Section 210-12 to not provide a minimum of two use categories in a vertical mixed-use development configuration, staff recommends approval. This has been single-family, a single level for a long time. Variance from Section 230-1 to reduce the undisturbed zoning buffer along the northern property line from 20 feet to zero feet. A variance from Section 240-13 to allow an animal hospital and veterinary clinic to be located within 100 feet from any properties zoned or used for residential purposes. And a variance from Section 250-2 to reduce the required number of parking spaces from 107 to 94. And a variance from Section 250-7 to allow parking between the building and the street. Continuing on, staff recommends approval with conditions for the following waiver requests. A waiver from Section 230-27 to allow the existing building to not be faced with primary brick, glass, wood, stucco, or stone. A waiver from Section 230-27 to allow precast concrete to constitute the majority of the building facade. Waiver from Section 320-12 to not install required buffer landscaping within the 20-foot northern zoning buffer. And a waiver from Section 320-21 to not install one landscape island for every 10 spaces. Continuing, a waiver from Section 320-21 to not provide a five-foot wide landscape strip along the perimeter of a surface parking lot. And a waiver from Section 350-2 to allow two curb cuts to remain on a single-street frontage. Now, not to complicate things, but staff recommends approval for these variances and waivers, with the exception of two. Staff recommends denial of the following variance requests. Variance from Section 250-7 to not provide pedestrian paths from sidewalk to building entrance. Staff finds that this is, this is something that, this is a principle that's found throughout our UDO, is not there now, and staff finds that this can be done by the applicant. And the second is a variance from Section 250-8 to not provide compact parking spaces. Staff finds that the existing parking lot can be restripped to provide compact parking spaces, especially in light of the fact that a parking reduction is being requested. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this item? Come on up.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Woody Galloway, 4062 Peachtree Road, up here representing MedVet. In this application for variance and waivers, staff has done a good job outlining things. I think the main thing to keep in mind is this is an existing building being repurposed. There are very few changes to the outside of this building. And the, a lot of the changes are necessitated because they're putting so much money inside this building. About $8 million they're gonna use to renovate this building, and virtually all of that is inside. We don't feel there's any impact on any adjacent properties. The building is located 199 feet from the closest apartment building, and 295 feet from the closest single-family home. And so, we don't feel that there's any impact to any of these properties, especially since there's no outdoor storage of dogs or animals. So there won't be any impact to any adjacent properties. As staff has indicated, they recommended approval with a couple of exceptions. Those exceptions are things we've talked through with staff, and I think we can accommodate. So, we're supportive of staff's recommendation and ask that you approve it. But I'll be here to answer any questions you have and reserve any remainder of my time if there is any opposition. Thank you.
Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Very good. Move on down to the next item, PZ 2024 1260, which is 2685 Johnson Road.
Mayor, members of council, this is a request for a variance to place dumpster enclosure in the side yard. As you recall, the city is working to help people provide enclosures for dumpsters by enabling them to gain building permits in areas where they normally would not. And so, the request is to allow a dumpster to remain in place in certain areas, conditioned on the fact that they are indeed enclosed. And so, this is the first of two tonight. A variance from Section 240-7 to install commercial dumpster enclosure in the side yard. And you'll find the owner is the Dauntless Properties LLC, and this is a corridor commercial. It is a placement of a commercial dumpster in the side yard of a commercial property. This is the aerial location with Interstate 85 to the east, of course, Johnson Road to the west. Here's a schematic of the site, and you'll see Sections A and B. And the dumpster had been in location A at the time of the application, has been moved to B at the preferred location for the applicant in getting in and out of the, in getting in and out of the dumpster access. And this is a view of that location B, from the Johnson Road location. This is another view, looking from the east to the west. So based on the analysis of the application, using the standards and criteria found in Chapter 280 of the UDO, staff does recommend approval of this. A variance from Section 240-7 to install a commercial dumpster in the side yard. And we just would require the, we would recommend that the council approve this with certain conditions, that the approval comes with a plan that's consistent with the one that was turned in, and that the enclosure shall be constructed with design and materials similar to and complementary with the existing primary structure on the site, and that the applicant shall conceal the enclosure from the view of the right-of-ways. And the applicant may plant landscaping that provides year-round screening with materials from the approved plant list in Section 2.2 of the UDO, or ornament the enclosure with public art as approved by the Public Art Commission. This is our staff recommendation, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Very good. PZ 2024 1261, which is 5588 New Peachtree Road.
This is the second of the dumpster variance request for tonight. A variance to place a dumpster enclosure in the side yard. The staff recommendation is to approve. Here's more about this application. This is the Adair Group LLC, 5588 New Peachtree Road. And it's a placement of one commercial dumpster in the side yard of a commercial property. The aerial view gives you an idea of where it's located, roughly across the railroad tracks from where we are on New Peachtree. This is a schematic that's, shows a little bit more about the site and where the dumpster is now, and where some of the parking is located. Here's a sketch. The applicant proposes to install a wooden eight-foot dumpster enclosure in the side yard of the commercial property. The enclosure would be placed in the rear of the northern parking lot, just like I showed on the previous slide. Here's a view, elevation view of the existing site. And staff recommends approval based on the criteria found in Chapter 280 of the UDO, to install the commercial dumpster enclosure in the side yard. Staff recommends that the plan be approved with plans that are similar to the plans that were sent in with the application, and the enclosure shall be constructed with a design and material similar to and complementary with the existing primary structure on the site. That concludes this report.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone in opposition? Very good. Moving on down to the last public hearing is PZ 1262, which is 5105 Peachtree Boulevard.
Mayor, council, this is a variance to allow over, or more than, three accessory structures at the site at 5105 Peachtree Boulevard. Staff has been working on permitting with this business owner. It's partially opened now as the Block and Drum. And this is, I'll say a supplement to the follow-up plans for the rest of the business in the rear of the existing business now. Staff does recommend approval with conditions, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about it. The applicant is Justin Staples, and it's about 5105 Peachtree Boulevard in the rear. This is a location across from the rail trail underneath Claremont Overpass, and has to do with the renovation of an existing commercial building. You know, the details include this need for more than, more than three accessory structures. So here's a little bit more about that site. In aerial, you see how it runs parallel to the Claremont Road overpass. It's a 1.6-acre lot located there, adjacent to the rail trail. You could access the property off of Peachtree Boulevard, and the service drive varies in width and ranges from 25 feet to 40 feet. This is a little bit of information about the site. In the back of the site, or at the bottom of this schematic, you have, you have a diagram of where the accessory structures would be located. So from left, top-left, around in a U shape, there's storage, there's a botanical structure, there's a proposed stage, and then you have three, three units for food service that would be, that will supplement and serve the people who come to this facility. And then you'll have another storage unit. So, seven in total. So, the applicant proposes to renovate the suite, or, you know, continue to renovate the suite for a distillery and tasting room, event space, cafe and garden, this mixed-use kind of entertainment area. And due to the extent of the interior renovation and the plans that are required, these accessory structures have been proposed. And so, to make the zoning complete and to account for all of them, the variances unfortunately are required. So, the applicant provided the site plan, also some elevations, a few pictures of the front of the existing building off of the rail trail, and then the rear yard where the stage and the other units will be in operation, and more of the areas of the, where the proposed structures will go. Staff recommends approval with conditions. A variance from Section 230-8 to allow a maximum of seven accessory structures. Development should be constructed in substantial conformity with the site plan that you just saw. And site should be limited to seven accessory structures. So, this is just for seven. It's not for anymore. And that concludes my report.
Should I say you want to speak in favor of this item, sir?
John did a great job.
Did a very good job.
I'm Justin Staples. I am the founder and creative director of Block and Drum. What is Block and Drum? Block and Drum is a, is a bit of a complex topic, but we, on, at Block and Drum, we are located, if you all are familiar with where Max Piano is installed, right kind of near the music installation, right underneath the Claremont Bridge. And we want to be a really dynamic location for people who are using the rail trail, a great spot for people to come, have a drink, get a little bite of food, and listen to some great music, is kind of the focus of what we're trying to do. So it's an adaptive reuse project. If you have lived, walked by this location about a year and a half ago, it would have looked quite different than it looks now. It was in disrepair, and a lot of folks kind of reported to me not feeling safe being there, but starting to, starting to change that with our location there. So what we are proposing here in terms of the variance is really to add what we're calling container kitchens, or little craft kitchens. So they're fabricated shipping containers that have been upgraded to include some equipment for light cooking. And I will lease these out to vendors, culinary entrepreneurs who want to do something cool and interesting here in Shambly, and offer Shambly residents some great food. The accessory structures are kind of in a secure location. They're hidden from the rail trail. They're in this secluded courtyard area. And besides the container kitchens, we also have a hydroponic farm, a botanical farm, which will grow produce for, to use not only in the kitchens, but as well botanicals to use in our spirits. We'll have a live... We'll have a live music stage, um, to have local artists perform, um, so people can enjoy their drink with some music or some food with some music. And then just, you know, again, just a great spot for people to hang out, um, and really activate that part of the rail trail that, um, to, to date has not been, uh, fully utilized. Oh, also, uh, very interesting, um, when doing the research for this, if you go back to two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, um, and you look at some in, uh, renderings of, of this space that were done by a city, city plan, they called this area Restaurant Row. And so if you look at that, that front page of that plan, our building is exactly where that is. So this will be the first incarnation of what, you know, the city had hoped for, uh, for many years.
Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, we'll move on down. We have, uh... Approval of minutes, we have three. Did anyone see anything that needed to be changed on those items? Are we good? Good, all right. Under first read this evening, we have the, uh, millage rate cap amendment. Assuming that'll wait till Tuesday or is that something we're going to do tonight?
We wait till Tuesday.
Wait till Tuesday. Under staff action items this evening, uh, we have the Peachtree Boulevard realignment gateway tip application.
Mayor and Council, we'd like to apply for a tip application for this area. Um, it's in the direction of helping the C I D expand its facilities, the roadway up in that area. And what we need to do is that, well, application will be applied, I mean, actually submitted in April, I mean, May fifth, so that's where the direction we want to go in.
Item.
Um, I've had, I've been turning this over my head a couple of times now and Chuck, we talked about this, but I just want to bring this to council's attention, that, uh, we get one shot at this tip application and for me, that the Peachtree Boulevard realignment, majority of this project falls outside of the city of Chambly. There is some that does fall into Chambly, but it's also putting cars in front of pedestrians. The, uh, the one I would like to bring to the top of this for everybody's consideration is our Chambly Tucker, uh, pathway. That is the one chance we're going to have to connect the east side and the west side of the cities and I think that should, I know that should be our number one. Uh, we can discuss that more if you'd like to, but I just want to throw that out there and just let you know that, um, as my calculus has changed, I, I want to, I want to do what's best for the city for the next fifteen years and I understand where the C I D is, they want to, they want to get their shovels in the ground, they want to have a big win, uh, but I also feel that it's necessary that we connect the two sides of the city with the, the Chambly Tucker path.
Any other comments from council? All right, that takes us into our second item, which is the Chambly Tucker Multi-Use Path Tip Application.
As Jimmy just spoke, we're applying, um, for this tip program for this project too, but it would be number two on the list. We have to designate number one and number two. And the information I provided to you is there. Again, May fifth, we have to apply for, so we have to, we just want to go forward with that proposal for a discussion at a later time, I guess.
And I apologize, I did get ahead of myself a little bit, uh, getting to the next agenda item.
It's okay, you knocked it off the list. So did you want, did you want to comment further? I'm assuming what you're saying is you'd like to see that be number one and Peachtree Boulevard be number two.
I'm satisfied with what I put out previously.
All right. Council member?
Thank, I just, well, if I, since I'm on the spot, I respectfully disagree with Jimmy first, uh, assessment of the situation and I feel like Peachtree Boulevard realignment will impact more of our citizens on a daily basis than this, uh, Chambly Tucker Multi-Use Path will. I am in favor of the Multi-Use Path, I just don't believe it's, um, higher priority than the Peachtree Boulevard Realignment Project.
I wish I had a map for each of these because it's hard to, um, you know, visualize when I don't even know, you know, I don't have it memorized. I know we've seen, uh, the plans before, but it would be nice to have a map up before me right now so that I could look at it one more time when I am referencing. But I do think both of these are very important projects and, um, if we could do both of them, that'd be great. Um, I don't...
There is a chance we might get funded for both of them.
Huh?
There is a chance that we may be able to get funded for both of them.
Yeah. Is, are we under, are, are we under some kind of a deadline for this tip application?
Yes.
May fifth, so we got to get, oh, day after my birthday.
If you... Leslie, if you want a map, I have one of the maps here with me.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna want to take a look at that map.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we get that to the council lady before Tuesday?
Yeah.
For reference, Peachtree Boulevard realignment is the area up in front of Hennessy, uh, as you're leaving, uh, Dorville and coming into, uh, Chambly where, uh, where the studios are being built, uh, that's that funky little area that's, uh, kind of hard to navigate. Uh, and yeah, it's like a, it's like an eight-way intersection. Uh, so it is, it is extremely important to us that we, uh, as, as the studios go into Dorville, that, uh, we want, uh, to be able to navigate safely, uh, our citizens to be able to navigate safely through that area. And the, uh, Chambly Tucker Multi-Use Path is the Chambly Tucker Road, uh, that connects, uh, from Peachtree, Peachtree Road in our downtown, just south of our Marida Station, uh, over to Buford Highway. So, uh, both really, uh, ones, ones, uh, both, both are really great projects, uh, that cost a, a whole lot of money and, uh, we're having to go to, uh, A R C, which is the Atlanta Regional Commission, uh, for funding, uh, assistance and we have to choose, uh, which of the two projects, uh, you know, come, come first. Uh, there is an opportunity that we might get funding for both, uh, but there are, they generally give out about, uh, twenty, twenty grants or twenty, approved twenty or so applications and there's usually more than a hundred, uh, so it would be highly unlikely that a city, uh, would get two, uh, but it's not to say that it couldn't happen. Anyway, uh, we'll move on down to the Broad Street Streetscape.
We had three engineering firms, planning firms present to us options, proposals. Uh, of those three, we narrowed it down and had interviews by a group of five people, which I, part of the agenda information. From that discussion, uh, we picked Axis as the main person or organization to do it. Everybody was impressed with the proposal, they looked a little bit outside of the box and, uh, that is our recommendation.
Questions from council on this item? All right. Public Facilities Authority Reimbursement Resolution.
I'll take that one over here. Sorry, my setup's a little bit different, um, than it used to be. So a little rusty, uh, but, um, this is a reimbursement resolution for, um, the procurement of a property on Cumberland Drive. Um, we would like to do that through our Public Facilities Authority, which as you know, has just gone through the General Assembly, um, and the bill has been passed and is waiting for the governor's signature. Um, and so in order to move forward with that purchase, um, we would like to do a reimbursement resolution to go ahead and purchase the property through city funds and then be reimbursed by the P F A and the financing that we do with that, um, when that time comes.
Thank you. Any questions from council on this item? Very good. Q four twenty twenty-three budget amendment?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Julie Piero, Finance Director. Um, in preparation for our audit, um, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, there were several line items that needed to be adjusted. So per our city policy, um, the budgetary level of control at the departmental level needs to be put in balance. We did have a few items that were over, but we do have some departments that did have a surplus, so we're, we'll be requesting through this resolution to just make those that went over whole with the surplus. Um, there were mainly the general fund, um, the mayor and council, city manager and police, um, police development, police department, sorry about for the error, and, uh, the other two funds, um, which have fund balance, um, to offset their overages is Hotel Motel and Solid Waste Fund. In your packet, you should see the budget amendment summary. The mayor and council, we had some illegal fees, um, that took our, took your budget over. Um, the city hall, uh, electricity, um, in the, um, city manager's office, um, we under budgeted for those expenses and the body cams and the vehicles in the police department were unbudgeted. Um, planning, other finance services, economic development, parks and wrecks had surpluses, which will cover the one-point-one overage in the other three departments. Hotel Motel is being adjusted by eighty-six thousand due to an increase in actual revenues, um, over the anticipated budget resulting in increased payments to discover de cab per state law. And lastly, uh, Solid Waste, um, they had a overage of thirty-three thousand, that was just due to rising costs in landfill purchases. The financial impact, uh, for this budget amendment is one-point-two for all funds. As I mentioned, Hotel Motel has, um, fund balance and so does Solid Waste. Um, also wanted to give you all a year-end review. These are unaudited numbers, so everything is subject to change. Per our expectation, most of the, um, funds did go over, but we projected that we would use but fund balance to cover those overages. Um, so you will see a four-point-two, um, for the total funds and all of those funds have fund balance to cover those shortfalls. And you can see our audit starts in two weeks. Um, staff is requesting that mayor and council approve the resolution as submitted.
Are there questions from council on this item? Very good, we'll move right on into Q one twenty twenty-four.
Um, we just finished our Q one in March thirtieth, um, so normally the following month we submit, um, quarterly budget amendments. If necessary, we did have some amendments that we needed to, um, bring before the council. General Fund had, uh, Parks and Wrecks, Facilities and Economic Development, departments that need, uh, additional funding. ARPA funds, we did receive some additional, um, fu- financing from the state, so we need to appropriate those. We also received three grants for the police department, which we need to appropriate those. And Stormwater Fund, um, is asking for additional funds as well. In our budget summary, I'm sorry it's so small and I did split it to two pages, um, Parks and Wrecks, um, we're doing the Wood Acres demolition, um, and the Midfield Trail restoration. Um, Parks and Wrecks, um, is also requesting twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars for Catalina Drive, the community garden, but we did receive a contribution to offset that cost. And, uh, the budget office did do a, a utilities analysis, which I believe you all had in your packet, and we did have a shortfall in facilities, so we're asking to make these, um, three items whole for the, uh, I think it's for city hall and for the police building and for Public Works. Next section is the ARPA funds. Um, this is for the artificial turf at Village Park. We received additional funding from the state of four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, the next section is the grant funds. We received three grants, the violent crime reduction co-responder program. Um, we also received the G O H S grant in the Real-Time Crime Center, which totals a little under a million dollars. Uh, the last section is Stormwater. Oh, I skipped one, I'm sorry. The Economic Development, that's the big one, is the one-point-nine million, that is for the acquisition of the Broad Street property that we bought last month. And finally, Stormwater, um, they had two restorations for Munford Drive and Belfort Property Restoration, totaling thirty-three thousand dollars, which they'll use fund balance. And staff is re- requesting that the mayor and council approve this resolution as submitted.
Julie, questions from council on this item?
One note, just on the property acquisition, is that you guys did approve a reimbursement resolution and that one-point-nine will be reimbursed for through the financing that we do on that property.
Yes, when we did the U R A meeting, that was that resolution, we'll reimburse the general fund for this purchase. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you, Julie. Next up is the Real-Time Crime Center. This is phase one. Who has that?
I'm taking this since, um, chief is unable to make it this evening. But, um, as Julie just mentioned, we, um, are requesting, uh, funds for, uh, through the American Rescue Plan Act that we were granted through the governor's office of planning and budget to do a real-time crime center. Um, so this contract, uh, covers, I think about roughly half a million dollars to, to purchase cameras through Flock for phase one of that, um, program, um, and the funds will be provided through that grant. Um, so, um, I believe it's a two-year, uh, contract with, um, about five hundred thousand dollars over that two-year period to, to cover the costs.
Questions from council on that item? Very good. Glass recycling?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Todd Hill, Director of Public Works. Uh, currently, the city of Chambly does not have any drop-off locations for glass recycling. The closest areas are Brookhaven Police Department and De Cab Farmer's Market. So we started looking at, we've heard a lot of asks for glass recycling, uh, since I've been here and, uh, so we started doing some research on glass recyclers and we reached out to two other recyclers, Strategic Materials, who does the, uh, ripple glass, purple, uh, roll-off bin and Howling Glass, who does a cart system. And we looked at both of them and basically we realized that the ripple glass is the most appropriate for us and so we looked at sites and the ideal site for us was at the police department and their parking lot next to Arrow Creek. The ripple glass dumpster takes up about one and a half parking spaces and so before we move forward with this, I had a meeting with, uh, Jody Gilfani and chief and, uh, so, uh, so they were in approval, you know, they were worried about at first that it was going to take up, uh, too much parking, but then when they saw where it was going to be at, it was no problem. Uh, so we talked about that and we decided that Strategic Materials would be the better one because the cart system would just be a, a nightmare and so the cost for ripple glass is that it's per pool or rather per coming to get the dumpster and switching it out. And so it's five hundred and sixty-five dollars. And so we want to do a pilot, see how much. They have said that if we assist them with going and reaching out to other, uh, commercial businesses such as Whole Foods and Publix to see about putting one in their parking lot, that they would reduce the fee or eliminate it completely, just because of the volume of glass that they would get. And so, uh, our recommendation is for the city to enter into this, uh, agreement with, uh, Strategic Materials.
Questions from council?
So, yeah, I mean, if we somehow can get multiple sites, like Whole Foods or whatever, because I, I think if we have one, then it's all going to go there. Like you said, it's going to be per pool every time we do it, so we're going to...
Right, we would not pay for pools on commercial sites.
No, I know that, but we would, we would all go there, so we would have more pools, I think, if we had, unless we, we spread them out to like Chambly Plaza and other places.
Right, if it's spread out, we'll have fewer...
Our volume, which would reduce our pools.
Well, I'm hoping that we'll have lots of pools at all of them, really, because, I mean, uh, the weight of, uh, glass is much heavier than most municipal solid waste. So what you're ending up with is ten percent, ten to twenty percent of our total waste, uh, weight, uh, our municipal waste is glass. So we want to actively work on recycling.
There's that too, there is, yes, that's, that's another thought, angle on that. Uh, the city of Flagler, B- B- The city of Flagler Beach, Flagler Beach, has a chipper, like a glass recycling chipper. And I know right now we don't have the room to do that, but they, I guess they sell the byproduct that comes out of the glass chipper. They use it for like, I've seen it mulch, like a glass mulch. I don't know if it's any, if it's any good, but I mean, it's just something to worth exploring since there is a workable model.
Yeah.
And William Whitson is the city manager there. He's from the Atlanta area. He's been to several council meetings over the years in Shambly. So he might be of assistance to somebody to educate, like, you know, what do you don't see in the newspaper, like, what are the problems? What are people doing? How is it, you know, just like our leaf sucker, you know? It's great to have it, but it comes with a lot of problems when people like put bricks in the chutes. I'm sure they have similar problems too with unwanted items in their glass chipper.
Right. And with the ripple glass container, they actually have a camera in there to monitor it. It monitors when it's full. It monitors also if there's other material. And since we have staff that goes out to Arrow Creek seven days a week, that part, this would be part of their responsibilities to check that actual dumpster, to make sure that there are no unwanted materials or the, so that we can remove those.
And it's in the public safety parking lot, so hopefully that will reduce unwanted behavior, so.
Yes.
Be a deterrent, anyway.
Most likely.
Thank you.
I have a question. So where does this glass go, once it's collected?
Strategic glass, I'd have to provide that before the vote, but I can provide all the information where it goes, but...
No, a lot of the recycles in the United States are shipped to China, which gives me a lot of pain because that just adds to the cost of recycling and it doesn't, doesn't make any sense. It'd be nice to know, it'd be nice to know that we can recycle and keep it in our own country, possibly even closer to home than that. So I would like that question.
I can't tell you exactly where it is, if it's North Georgia or in one of the Carolinas, but they do have a facility that they haul it to and that they process it.
And are these going to be like, are these containers going to be color-coded type of thing?
No, it's all glass. You just put it in except for like stained glass, you don't, they won't take stained glass and certain glasses. And we'll make sure that all the signage is out there on the things that we, they don't take.
Attention, welcome.
I always think it's interesting when they make you separate it out, then you look in the bin and there's no dividers. All the glass gets mixed up anyway, so I don't, I've never understood that, so I do like that we don't have to separate here.
So to the council lady's point, though, there is, you know, there is some concern that recycling doesn't really get recycled. So do we get some type of report tracking or will there be something to let us know, you know, we paid for X amount of pounds of glass to be pulled or something and this is where it went? And, you know, just want to make sure because there is, there's a lot of folks been recycling in the county lately and it's been going straight to the trash.
Right. And we can reach out to Strategic Materials and find out the answers to those questions.
Is the thought, you mentioned about this will take about 10% out of the landfill or out of our cost, is the thought that this 565 per pool will be offset? Or are we going to see a traditional...
It's going to be offset by a slight increase from what we would do. It's slightly higher per ton. I'm working to hopefully, if we get these other locations, we would reduce that to, I would like to see it pulled for free myself.
Yeah, absolutely. I love the idea of recycling, so thank you for working on that. Yeah.
Speaks to the sustainability part of our desires.
Oh, yes, speaks to my heart.
All right, anything else? Very good. Last up is the Discover Shambly Advisory Committee appointments. I'm assuming we have to make an appointment on Tuesday? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. And then we move back down into our items from development. We have the 4118 West Johnson Circle project. Did anyone have any questions for the applicant on that? Anybody? Good? All right, we're good on that item. 3715 Longview, this was the synagogue. Anyone have any questions or comments for the applicant on that item? Seeing none, we'll move on. 1700 Century Center, this was the veterinary hospital. Anyone have anything on that item?
The only question I have is, can you tell us what are the variances that are due to like them not changing any existing conditions versus variances where they've added something new or changed something? Does that, does that make sense? From what it looks to me, like, most of the variances are from just, it's an existing building that doesn't conform to today's code. They're not really changing anything to incur these, incur these variances.
Yes, excuse me, yeah, most of the variances have to do with redevelopment threshold requirements.
To, to tag along with that one. So the, the parking setback or rather, well, I guess it's setback, that on the north side, that parking is already existing the way that it is and the parking is, is right up against the property line. Is that what I'm saying?
That's correct.
See, rather?
Yeah, that's correct.
So they can't do any buffering because there's nowhere to plant anything?
They could if they removed pavement and curbing, yeah.
But they, but could they, would there be, there would be rather a number of plant, plants or trees or whatever that they would have to plant to do that. Can we get that number and have it planted elsewhere on the property?
Yes, we can.
I think that would at least, you know, be part of the reason that we specify this, which is, you know, what trees and shrubs and plants do for the environment.
Anything else?
Something?
Trees are pretty likely to exist, like trees. Could you speak, maybe answer your questions?
We talked about a lot.
Yeah, there are a lot of trees that exist right there. So that property was sold off by Century Center quite some time ago, but it was divided at the edge of the, edge of the parking lot, but there are trees that line that whole area. So you couldn't very easily plant there.
They're along that whole area, but then there is other...
Along the western side is where staff has requested that we add some additional landscaping, which is along Century Circle, along the frontage. So we would, we would add landscaping there, we'd add landscaping in the landscape islands that exist today. So we will add landscaping where it's appropriate and would provide additional shading or buffering.
But there would be a certain number of plants, trees, shrubs, whatever, if we were to require you to reduce that parking lot so that you could plant them. And what I'm saying is that, could we, could you not, instead of thinking that you're going to reduce the parking to plant, plants on the north side, add more trees and landscaping to open areas that you already, that you have?
We can certainly look at that with staff. I think that one of the beautiful things about Century Center is it does have a great ambiance and, and feel as you go through. So you got to be careful about where you add it, but there's certainly areas that could, you could add landscaping to. The whole eastern side of this property that's toward the single family is densely wooded. So that's all very densely wooded.
Already densely wooded?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
If you look at the aerial that's provided by staff, you can see that, that there is, that area is heavily wooded that's toward the eastern side.
Okay, okay. That, that makes sense then. Is this the old Labor Department building?
Excuse me?
The old Labor Department building?
I think it may, it was an old, yeah, it was an old state building and right now I think the Methodist Church is in there, but they are leaving and so it would be, and as you might imagine, office leasing is not the best right now. So this is a great opportunity and a great benefit to the community and they're putting a lot of money in. So it will provide tax revenue as well.
All right, we have 2685 Johnson Road. Any concerns or questions on that item?
The question that I have, this is a dumpster thing?
Yep.
We see a picture of a wooden enclosure and you said that the enclosure needs to be out of the same or substantially the same materials that the building is out of. So we're not going to get a wooden enclosure, are we? We're going to get, what, I don't even remember what the materials are for this one. The second one, I do know that the...
Changed.
Yeah, I'm too old to change. Okay, what are the materials for this building?
So...
Oh, it's, it's brick, isn't it?
Right. With staff, staff intends, with the condition, staff proposes that we would work with the applicant to come up with a material that's practical, that meets that, that criteria. The council can specify anything, given, given the, given the variance within reason. But if the council would like to propose something more specific, we'd be very much open, obviously.
Well, I mean, I think that the wooden ones are pretty ugly looking and they deteriorate fast, so I'd like to see some, you know, masonry type of, and something that matches the building, of course. And I understand wooden gates, but the whole thing to be made out of wood is just not, and that's kind of not within the spirit of what was intended. Did, the site plan shows two dumpsters. Now, are these potential locations?
No. The site plan shows two locations. Site A was where the dumpster was located at the time of the application and Site B is the preferred location.
Okay.
Going for it.
And, and these will be, these will also have some vegetative screening?
They could, that could, it could be an option. They could be completely vegetated, like, you know, they could be screened with vegetation if it's efficient as an option.
Oh, I'd like to have both. I'd like to have the, the enclosure, but then screened from the, from, actually from both ways. Northeast Expressway is a little bit less important than Johnson Road, but, you know, just to, I mean, the whole purpose of doing this is to get these dumpsters out of our So I think screening with some vegetation would also minimize the appearance of either, either location, really, if that's at all possible.
Yes, thank you.
And I'm going to say the same thing about the second one, too.
So any other comments on 2685 Johnson Road? Good, all right. 5588 New Peachtree Road. 5105 Peachtree Boulevard. Comments on that item? Moving too quick for you?
Um, yeah, on the 5105 Peachtree Boulevard, the site plan shows potential... Oh, the potential driveway coming around where it exists now and then going between...
There's a canyon behind the building that is the State Farm Building, the Travis Head Building. And then there's a parking lot that is pedestrian, so it's like, oh, it's like, it's a nice sidewalk.
That's not what this sketch shows.
Yeah, yeah, I would ask the applicant to address that. This, your question is a good question and valid, but it, it's not related to the proposed variances at hand. Justin?
Any questions you might have, though, about, is there, can you...
There's a red line.
Yes.
That goes along the existing...
So that red line is actually a corridor through the building. That red line, as you can see, there, at the top, we have Shambly Rail Trail. And then we have a connecting pathway from the Shambly Rail Trail across the private drive where there's now a pedestrian crosswalk along with protective bollards. And then that goes right through to the courtyard in the back. So that, if we're speaking about the red line on this, that's actually, that red line is, represents a firewall. A firewall, a two-hour firewall.
Good?
But, so, but it's still showing potential parking behind your building.
Oh, so, yeah, so this doesn't actually show any, any parking. Our, our building is actually exempt from any parking requirements due to us being within one-quarter mile of, of Shambly. But we have a parking agreement with the owners, Saltlick, behind, for the lot, behind Nathan's Driving School. So we have rights to about 40 spots within that parking lot. So parking is tough, so, you know, when you're, when you're coming in...
Well, I'm just trying to understand, you have, you have rights to the lot, but that parking, not a parking lot.
That would be public parking. I wouldn't park there. Our, our staff will park in the, in the, in the parking lot, yeah. So I guess, I'm, I'm, help me understand more about what your concern is.
Well, we can park, we can park there.
Yeah, so this, this, this site plan does not show, can we go back? Do we have the larger parcel? Yes, we do, with the, the previous.
Yeah. Yeah. Will you go to a commercial?
Is, is this question related to variance or just curiosity?
Um, well, you know, if it's shown on the site plan, then there's potential that it's going to get built and, you know, so I'm...
So I'd like to add something. Council member, the, the applicant has already gone through all the permitting for the project and this is, this is one last thing that was unaccounted for, that wasn't anticipated early on, the number of accessory dwelling units, I mean accessory structures. And I don't think you're doing accessory dwelling units. So the parking is indeed put on behind Nathan's. And then we actually took great care in figuring out how people would walk from that parking lot into the front of the building and then in the back. So, but it's a good question.
Thing is to go over and visit.
I've visited twice, but I'm happy to go every day.
Final item is the 4950 Peachtree Boulevard and that is the charging stations, Lowe's parking lot. You have something on that?
Yeah, mayor and members of council, this is a continued item from the February council public hearing. And I can go into any kind of review that you might need about this. There has been no change in the proposed site plan from Tesla at the Lowe's site. The applicant did try to explore different locations within the site, was unable to find a location that works. The applicant is here and can answer any other questions you might have since it was first presented in February. And we have, we have some slides loaded if you, if you'd like to see them, but nothing's changed materially since February.
Did the applicant want to speak on this item or any update?
Hi, my name is Stefan Pialui. I'm the design manager for Tesla for the site. So we did go back and explored and tried to talk to Lowe's about other areas on the parking lot, but, so they pushed back on the area behind the Chase Bank, which is what we're, that was our first option. what we're, that was our first option. That's what we approached them initially about, and their employees were not in favor of moving to another area on the parking lot. So we explored the other area by the Zaxby's, that's further from the street. Lowe's was not in favor of that. So what we did, it, we submitted more documents showing, we went, we went to our East Point, Georgia site, which is a Lowe's site with the same configuration, and they also have the same plaza across the street. So we documented the behaviors, the behavior of the people who would come and charge to see how many people are crossing the street and leaving their cars, or how many people are going into the Lowe's. So we submitted all of that, and we also requested a, an accident report of how many accidents have happened on that specific intersection, and we did not record any over the past three years. So we're still hoping that that location would be approved by you guys.
Questions from council on this item? Very good, thank you so much. All right, and that moves us down to, we have no mayor and council items this evening, so that moves us down to public comments. Read the rules of order real quick. The mayor is the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body, not to individual members. Anyone wishing to speak shall come to the microphone, give your name and address for the city clerk. Limit remarks to three minutes unless further time is granted by council. Not speak a second time until everyone wishing to speak has spoken once, and no one can speak more than twice. Please do not speak unless you have the microphone and have been recognized. See how well I do that when I have what I... Anyone wishing to address council this evening? Come on up.
I am the official timekeeper, and when I get three minutes, I will cut you off. It can be very jarring, so I just want to give everybody a warning.
Thank you for the warning.
Work on that delivery.
Good evening, Mayor Mok and council. My name is Brittany Harper, and I am the chair of Shambly's Public Art Commission. After watching last month's council meeting and seeing the discussion about the Public Art Commission and the Arts Master Plan, I felt it was my duty to come and address you all tonight. Last year was my first year on PAC, and it was also a milestone for the, for, a milestone year for the city, since we were able to hire our first public art coordinator, Tanisha, who served on the commission with me until her hiring around June. In my initial observations of the group dynamic when I started, it was clear that everyone was passionate and very knowledgeable. However, we often stalled on making meaningful progress due to a lot of circular discussion in our meetings. But when Tanisha transitioned to her role as the public art coordinator, she was able to really focus the group's energy, and her hard work helped us move forward, and we were able to complete an impressive number of projects in 2023. As she reported to this council in February, our 2023 achievements included four sculptures purchased, eleven painted utility boxes, a painted piano installation, a fiber arts weaving installation, and a very successful chalk walk and artist market event. We also have multiple projects planned for this year, and at least twenty projects for consideration in years 2025 and beyond. At the end of 2023, we had four PAC members who vacated their seats, either due to term expiration or choosing to resign, and we started 2024 with a relatively new PAC. And while we may lack historical background on everything that PAC has been through since its inception, we bring fresh perspective, enthusiasm, and new ideas along with our expertise, and we take our role seriously, and we are not there just to warm a seat. Our work is and has been guided by the Arts Master Plan. In fact, of the forty-one action items outlined in the Arts Master Plan, we have completed or at least started work on twenty-six of them. That's sixty-three percent, which is not bad for being five years into a ten-year plan and having been hamstringed by a global pandemic. Not bad for a volunteer group that's only been around for four years. I relish the opportunity to engage with the council and city staff to revise the art master plan, to benefit all of our goals and dreams for Shambly, and to course correct plans directive as needed. And we do hope that you will invite PAC to be a part of that process. And we also hope that the council will take the time to get to know the current PAC members, and we also invite all of you guys to join us at our public meetings, which are on the fourth Thursdays of the month at six PM in this very room. And so thank you for your time, and I look forward to engaging with each and every one of you directly. Thank you.
Cheers.
Now, just as a question for y'all, that, that wouldn't, she doesn't have to do that as a public comment, we can have a section dedicated without...
Boards, authorities, and it's on the agenda, it's, uh...
Yeah, okay, all right, just want to make sure we don't hold a three-minute timer.
Where's that? I have my glasses on.
It's, uh, Tuesday.
But is that always on Tuesday?
All right.
Anyone else wishing to address council this evening?
I would like to address everyone and say, welcome back, Kristen, after your...
Come on up, come on up, you're good. Yeah, come on.
Hey, I'm Matt from forty seventy-six East Johnson again. On the Peachtree Boulevard gateway realignment thing, that directly impacts me as well where I live, and I've lived here and there, right there, for a long time, and have dealt with that intersection, and I've seen the drawing of the realignment, and I don't know the specifics, because in here, you didn't put that up there for us to see. But if you've ever driven up Peachtree Boulevard into Peachtree Corners, where they have the nice pedestrian bridge at, at the forum, that's what that intersection needs. So in my neighborhood, I have multiple people who work at the Brands Mart and the H Mart, and, well, there's no sidewalks with the realignment, they would have those, but trying to cross that intersection, it's not a very pedestrian-friendly, and I know that the long-term path, the Shambly path, includes coming over that section and actually kind of goes down, it goes across the back of my property and right across the back of their property. But a pedestrian bridge across that as part of that, I think it's something that should be brought up, because it would greatly impact, once the Toll Brothers property is done, the ability of people to, without getting in their cars, access the H Mart and the area once Assembly builds out at some point in time. But I think that should be considered as something that really should be an ask.
I, I know this is, this is supposed to be a one-way conversation, but Peachtree Corners actually offered us their bridge. That's how much they hate it.
I, I will also add, since we're speaking out of turn, that the, that pedestrian component is part of the realignment project, and even if it's not shown in there, how it is designed, because you have to have the road, and then you have to know where to know to put the pillars for the pedestrian bridge and all that, it's all part of the consideration.
Anyone else wishing to address council this evening? Anyone else wishing to address council? Any council members wishing to address the audience this evening?
I, I have a song.
And, uh, do we have, no, we're good, so we have no executive session this evening, so we are good. Thank you all for joining us, we appreciate you being here.